Evening, everyone. If you'd like to find a seat, there are some seats over here. I know no one wants to be in the view of the camera, but there are some seats over here also. So can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camille, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Ankenberg.
Present.
Trustee DeChambeau.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Paul.
Present.
Mayor Andy.
Present, and our colleague, Trustee Taylor, is not feeling well today, so he is not able to make it. So we're wishing him a speedy recovery. Just want to note, you see us all in pink shirts, and in keeping with the DPW tradition of Observance of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we're all wearing pink. I would also like to acknowledge that it's also Italian-American Heritage Month, for those of you who are celebrating, and Hispanic Heritage Month, which I celebrated just ended yesterday. So congratulations, and I hope everyone celebrated in the way that they saw fit. So we do have a few appointments today that we're going to go over quickly, and then we're going to move into presentations, because we do have a presentation, and this is why you see Evak here. And we need them to get back to work, because you never know, you know? Calls coming. So the first appointment is authorizing the appointment of Eileen Piero to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an ad hoc member with term to expire December 1st, 2023. May I have a motion authorizing this appointment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And Eileen is here. We want to thank you, Eileen, for agreeing to serve. If you want to say a few words, you can.
You don't have to.
Okay. So, you know, we have around 50 volunteers in the village who give of their time and their talent, at no, you know, not asking for anything in return, and so we really do appreciate. It's because of the volunteers that we have that we are the village that we are. Yes, so you can come up and sign the book, Eileen. The second appointment is authorizing the appointment of John Costanzo, our chief, to the position of secretary to the village administrator, effective Monday, October 23rd. I know some of you are wondering, what the heck is this about? So the chief of police is retiring, as you all know, and he will stay on for a few months to help us with the transition, to assist with the new chief of police. So may I have a motion authorizing the appointment of the chief, John Costanzo, to the position of secretary?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So thank you, John, for staying on with us for a bit more. And we will hear from the chief again this evening, and we'll have a few words thanking him for his service. So we do have presentations, and we will start with a presentation from the director of the Tukahoe Road Race Challenge, presenting a check to the honorary, I don't know if everyone knows who's getting it, but I'll let her tell you.
Is this on? It is. So first, I just wanted to let everybody know that we had record numbers of attendance for the road race this year. We had 594 people register. That's almost 100 more than last year.
Wow.
Yep. And just a little bit about the makeup of those registrants. We had over 200 people who were 18 years or younger. So we really, you know, this is a community race. We had great participation from young people. We had about the same number of Tukahoe residents as we did last year, but the numbers for Eastchester and Bronxville doubled. So again, we're really, you know, building that list of runners who are in the near area. There's a lot of people to thank, so please bear with me. But we also had record numbers of sponsor donations this year. So I just wanted to acknowledge all our sponsors. We included a very high-level donor category this year, the Diamond Sponsor, and that was picked up by, almost immediately, by Chestnut Market. They're the owners of the gas station on Marble Dale. We also then had the Raffiani family as a Platinum Sponsor. They've been with us for many, many years. And a new sponsor, Elkan Industries. And finally, Assemblywoman Amy Pollan. They were all Platinum sponsors. Our gold, or I'm sorry, our civil sponsors were Marble Hall Apartments, Broken Bow Brewery, and of course, they featured the after-party, After the Race, which was very successful. We have the Seminara family, Karen Med Spa &amp; Laser, Remax, San Pietro Wines, State Senator Shelley Mayer, and Senator Mayer and Assemblywoman Pollan have, for the last seven years, contributed as sponsors to this race. Ocean First Bank and Ortho on Main. And then we had our final Bronze category, which was, our sponsors were Tucked Away, Westchester Funeral Home, Totally Wired, The Dance Gallery, Yoga Six, and Lake Avenue Dental. So we really owe a lot to those local businesses who donated over $17,000 to the race. We also had a lot of businesses who could participate, giving us free gift certificates for our raffle, which really helps us draw in a lot of registrants. Or they donated food, or they donated water. So I'd like to acknowledge them, too. We have Tucked Away, Pasquale's Deli, Crestwood Pizza, Cowers, Gigi Nails, Head Rush, Mama Asunta Restaurant, Cornell's Hardware, Zero Oronove, Crestwood Shoe Repair, Dance Gallery, Sweet Treats, Remax, SRG Fitness, Spring Hill Suites. And we actually had two food donations, one from Amrita Foods, which is a company based in Scarsdale. And we also had bars donated by Kate's Food, who is in Oregon, and they heard about the race and contacted us. So we're, you know, getting out there. I also need to thank some people who were critical to making this happen. First, our police department and our DPW. As the race gets, you know, more people, it becomes more complex, and both of these organizations help us pull it off every year. There was a moment at, as we were waiting for the finishers of the first race to come in, I was standing next to Lieutenant Zerolnick, and the race timers were like, I wonder, you know, when the first person's going to come? And Lieutenant Zerolnick said, they're almost here. And I, for a minute, I thought like, he really could sense that? And I didn't know he had an earpiece, because I was standing on his other side. But these guys have done just an amazing job. Same thing with DPW. It's, there's a lot to do, and they always deliver. So thank, thank you to both of those organizations for that. I couldn't do this without the dedicated volunteers for the race, so I'd like to sincerely thank Donald Crosby, Ginger Crosby, John Galuzzi, Sofia Chia Peta, Deborah Conkling, Eileen Gary, and a lot of them are here tonight, so you guys should stand up. Shannon McDonough, Betty O'Laughlin, Suu Chi Yamara, Renee Arena, who sang the National Anthem, and she always does an amazing job. Naomi Dubé from Eastchester Cross Country, Tukahoe PAC 7, Tukahoe BSA Troop 19. And, you know, the entire board showed up, so I want to thank the entire board. The mayor is always out there, along with the deputy mayor, getting new sponsors for us, so I wanted to thank them for that. I also wanted to thank Ryan Rueda, who deals with all of the checks and making sure that everything gets balanced, and we can report on that this evening. And of course, the village, because the village is, you know, the biggest sponsor for the race. So all told, we brought in from the sponsors and the registrations and donations. We had also very large donations made through the race page. We got about $37,000 from that. With our in-kind donations, we, it was really $40,000 that the race brought in this year. So, yep. So after all expenses are paid, we are very happy to be able to give this check. And I'm going to ask Evak to come up and the mayor to come out for $26,000.
Thank you, guys. So while we have Evak here, I just want to thank them all so just for the hard work that they do. In the last, I'd say the last two months or so, I've gotten calls from residents just saying what a wonderful job they did when, when they, you know, answered a call in an emergency. One, in fact, was a life-or-death situation. And one of the residents said, Evak literally saved his life. And so I, when he went to visit Evak to say thank you, it was just amazing at how they were like, oh, we're just doing our jobs. You know, we're just saving lives. So we appreciate the work that you do. And just to remind the residents and anyone who's watching that Evak really relies on donations from the public. They're not funded. They're not in our tax base, so they don't get funding the way the police or the, you know, the DPW gets. And so we really want to encourage residents to support them. You can go on social media and find them. Their website is eastchesterems...
Yeah, our website is www.eastchesterems.com.
Dot com.
Click a link in the bio for donations. We also send out a mailer for donations twice a year.
So thank you, guys, all very much. And I guess you probably want to go and save some lives.
We want to make sure the district is covered. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone. Thank you very much.
Talk about feel-good. Good night. And, and again, a huge thank you to Dr. Howell for just sponsoring, for putting, organizing this race. It's just, every year, it's getting bigger and better. And all of the volunteers who work with her say, you know, ever since Renee did this, this has just gotten so much better. Who's going to take over? So she can't leave. She's just going to have to stay there and keep doing it. So thank you, Renee. You guys feel like some more feel-good stuff? We'd like to present an award to one of our residents, and I'm going to turn it over to our deputy mayor to present that.
So, you know, we run a lot of programs in the village that require a lot of volunteers. And last year, we started this kind of tradition where we gave some community service awards to residents. And last year, we focused on young people. This year, I'd like to focus on, on one person in particular who, who comes out to every single event and works really hard. Will cook, will run the barbecue, will help clean up, will help set up. And I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for all the hard work that you do, John Gunther.
You can go to the mic. You should go to the mic.
I just want to say thank you for you guys sharing your love, because love draws love attention. And your love for Tukahoe made me do what I do. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you. We do have our fire department chief, Tween, here, and he has an announcement that he'd like to make. Do you have any checks, chief?
I don't have any checks. Tomorrow night's our budget hearings.
Well, we should, we should invite people to, yeah.
I'll say tomorrow night's the fire department budget. The proposed budget was presented at the September meeting, and it'll be voted on tomorrow night at the October meeting at Fire Headquarters, 255 Main Street at 7:00 p.m. So if anybody has questions on the budget, you can look at the proposed budget on our website, eastchesternyfd.gov, and you can see links to the proposed budget. So if anybody has any questions. I was talking to the commissioner of the Highway Department, and Frank suggested that I come to a meeting to talk about the issue we had with the garbage truck over the summer and lithium batteries. Somebody disposed of a drone that had rechargeable lithium batteries. There's probably five or six extra batteries with the drone. And when the garbage hopper came down and crushed the batteries, they caught on fire and caught the back of the garbage truck on fire. So the DPW workers returned to the garage, which we wish they just would have stopped and asked, you know, called the fire department. But they made it back, because it was a small fire in the hopper, and they put it out with a fire extinguisher. But that is an ongoing problem. We had one earlier in the summer up in Eastchester with a private Carter, and it was a bigger fire, because it was an e-bike battery, so it's about 30 cells or more. And so they had to dump the whole garbage in the back of the CVS on Post Road. So it's a growing problem. So I just wanted to mention to the residents, it's illegal to throw away rechargeable batteries. And the reason is because it can catch the garbage facilities on fire. So there's proper ways of disposing of them. If the batteries are undamaged, you can usually return them to a big box store like Home Depot or Lowe's. They have recycling boxes in the front of the store. And if you have damaged batteries, or no other way to get rid of them, the Westchester County Hazardous Material Recovery Facility, the HMRF, will take lithium batteries. So you have to call, make an appointment. It's on the Westchester County website. And so we just want to stress to the residents to properly dispose of rechargeable batteries.
Chief, is there, other than coming to this meeting, a lot of people sometimes don't watch the meeting. Is there any way that we can put out a message to the community in writing with suggestions on how to dispose of these batteries?
So we've been posting things on our social media pages and our website. So if you, if you look on there, there's NFPA handouts and stuff that you should be able to download off our website on the proper disposal of the rechargeable batteries. Sure. So regular batteries can go into regular garbage. If they're like Ni-Cads, you know, nickel cadmium, lithium ion, it's like those, usually rechargeable batteries should not go in the garbage. If it's not rechargeable, you can put it in the garbage.
So like regular AA, AAA?
Right.
Those kinds of batteries is what he's talking about?
Yeah, regular batteries, once you're done with them, it's usually have very little charge in them. And the metals aren't, you know, they're not going to start a fire, so they can go in the garbage into the normal waste stream. But rechargeable batteries, it's actually illegal in Westchester County to put rechargeable batteries in the garbage. They're supposed to be recycled. Because of the metal that's in them, it's not good for the environment.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks for bringing this to our attention.
Yeah, and just another thing. I noticed on your website that as of October 15th, the residents could put leaves out to the curb. And that's always interesting when you get a car fire and you see it parked on a pile of leaves. The catalytic converters on the cars get extremely hot, so even when the car is turned off, it's hot enough to start a fire if it's a big pile of leaves. So just for safety, remind the residents, don't park your car on leaves or tall grass. If you go to an event and it's a grass field parking lot, make sure it's not like tall grass, because if it hits that exhaust system, it can start a fire. And just one more thing. This month is our Fire Safety Month. You know, last week was Fire Safety Week, but we have three school districts, and we hit all the young children. So this year's thing is kitchen fires. Pay attention, is the slogan that NFPA came out. Because many times, kitchen fires start because somebody walks away from the kitchen to go do laundry or something, and, you know, it'll start a fire on the stove. So just use caution. And if I could just say one last thing, I just want to say congratulations to Chief Costanzo. When I first got promoted to chief in 2017, he was a big help to me. So I just want to thank him. I'm a resident of Tukahoe, so thank you for his 40 years of service, or 40-plus years of service, to the village. And just want to thank him personally for helping me in my career as well. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So we do not have any public hearings today, so we will move to the adoption of the minutes. So may I have a motion for the approval of minutes of the March 6th and September 11th meetings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And this takes us to the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items. Yes? Anthony Fiori?
Anthony Fiori, F-I-O-R-E, Freedom Place, Tukahoe. I think it's Agenda III or IV, the Midland Place Project.
Yeah, the...
Just wondering if, once it gets approved, when's it like going to start?
You're talking about the sewer?
Yeah.
The sewer? So maybe, David, you could talk about the timeline?
Anthony, as of today, don't have the timeline. Tonight, the board will hopefully approve it. We then do have to do kind of pre-construction meetings, so I can't...
Just let the residents know about parking and stuff?
We'll let the residents know, yeah. There'll be postings on there. I can't imagine it's going to start in the next few weeks, though. But we'll have something out there.
All right, cool.
Thank you. Anyone else have any agenda items that you would like to address in person? Anyone on Zoom? So this will take us to Resolution Number 1, authorizing the closure of Warren Avenue and the use of village streets on Tuesday, October 31st, for the annual Westchester Park Civic Association Halloween Party and Parade?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No one is opposed to a party and a parade. Resolution Number 2, authorizing the sale of a surplus pickup to the highest bidder in the amount of $2,750. And this was from a DEC grant that we received, right, David? In part?
The replacement vehicle was in part by the DEC grant. This is just the surplus thing, an older vehicle.
So may I have a motion to authorize the sale of this pickup truck?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the same goes for Resolution Number 3, authorizing the surplus of 2012 Kenden Stand-Up Motorcycle. Anybody need a motorcycle? May I have a motion? Trailer?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And it takes us to Resolution Number 4 that Anthony Fiori just referred to, authorizing the approval of the Midland Place Sewer Replacement Project, bid to the lowest bidder, Palladino Concrete Creations, in the amount of $312,365. And this was also a part of a CDBG project where we received $150,000 to continue working on our sewer upgrades. May I have a motion authorizing the approval?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And may I have a motion authorizing the approval of vouchers to pay the bills in the amount of $378,381.72.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And I'm just checking to make sure that there's nothing that was left out. There were a few things that were added, right, David? So the community service award and all that will just be added on? Yep. So we did add a new resolution authorizing the non-union salary modifications effective June 1st, 2023. So the board has been in discussions about salaries for the non-union people. So the union contracts were ratified and passed, but we had to discuss the non-union salaries. So we've had a couple of conversations around the non-union salaries, and we've made some modifications. If you'd like to see what those modifications were, you can find those at the clerk's office. So may I have a motion to authorize the non-union salary reductions, modifications?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And this is what happens when you write your notes before the meeting day. And you're like trying to reconcile here. So sorry about that. And then that's going to take us to departmental reports to the board. And can we start out with, is there anyone from DPW going to give a report? Okay, I'm going to just leave you for last, chief, today. So do you have anything, Gary?
No, just want to, you know, say what a pleasure it's been to work with the chief all these years. Been working with him a long time, reports and everything. It's just been, it's been a pleasure, and he's been professional throughout. Anytime I have questions on anything, he's the person I'd go to. He's been great. Thanks, chief.
David?
Can I go to the library first?
No.
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a couple things just with DPW. Obviously, we are wearing the pink shirts, Yeah, I have a couple things. Just with DPW, obviously, we are wearing the pink shirts, and DPW does this every year, so we thank them. And, you know, the DP guys are, DPW guys are out there wearing this every year, so they're always supporting Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so thank them for that. Leaf season, Chief Tween did talk about not parking your vehicle on leaf piles, but leaf season did start, and it runs through, officially through December 15th. We ask that residents kind of try to keep them in a tight winrow in front of their homes, so DPW has the, can come and vacuum them up over the next few months. DPW Day, just so everyone knows, is this Saturday at Main Street Park between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. A lot of fun activities down there. A lot of kids love to go in the trucks and honk the horns and do that kind of stuff, but there'll be a magician and a task will be there in the library board and the history committee, so a lot of fun activities. And let's hope for good weather. And then paving, scheduled to begin this Wednesday with the roads of Sagamore Road all the way to the Village of Bronxville, portions of Fisher Avenue, and Wallace Street.
And the Sagamore Road strip, we've coordinated with Bronxville to do some...
So we are going to pave to our line, and then Bronxville is going to take it from approximately Minturn Down to Avon Circle. So they're gonna be paving their portion that they haven't already paved the last couple of years. So it'll be one continuous strip from Avon all the way into Depot Square.
Nice. We like that? Do you have anything, John? So can we have the library give a report? Camille, do you have anything while they're coming up? Do you have anything?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to remind the residents that resident parking stickers expire at the end of November.
Okay. So parking stickers expire the end of November. Please make note of that. Okay, and we have our Director of the Library, Swadish Pashnanda.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just wanted to keep you updated with the upcoming events. We still have our very popular sewing classes. The next one is Monday, October 23rd at 6:00 p.m., and they are going to make a blouse. And then we have on Tuesday, October 24th at 6:30 p.m., Managing Common Invasive Plants in Westchester, an Elder Law Seminar, Wednesday, October 25th at 2:00 p.m., What Happens When Someone Dies Without a Will. And for Halloween, the Special Reading of the Rivan, Monday, October 30th at 4:00 p.m. And lots more event. Our regular yoga, Tai Chi, Mahjong, gentle chair yoga, and senior strength training and meditation breath work. And for children, our main programs are Kids Art Class with Mike Teeter, Wednesday, October 18th at 4:45. And for craft is pumpkin painting, Tuesday, October 24th at 4:00 p.m. at Community Center. And then we have for teenagers Dungeon and Dragon, Friday, October 27th at 3:30 p.m. And there's more programs, so please check our website. And any question, give us a call. And I also want to say, on behalf of the Friends of the Tocco Library, to the community who help us with the fundraising bake sale, and Friends raised the money, it was $516. And I really, really want to thank for their support. And our Friends, next Friends Meeting will be on Wednesday, November 1st at 7:00 p.m. And Friends are also looking for volunteer. If you're interested in joining us, please give us a call. And number is 914-961-2121. Thank you.
Thank you, Swadish. And that brings us to the Chief of Police, John Costanzo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Just first, I'll start with an announcement. This Thursday is our annual Pizza with Police event. It's in Sanford Gardens in the courtyard between Midland Place and Washington Street. It starts at 4:30, runs till 6:30. So if you want to come by and grab a slice of pizza, something to drink, and a nice conversation with our police officers, we'll be there between 4:30 and 6:30. Thank you to Lieutenant Angelo Zerolnik, who organized this event, as well as many of the other outreach events that we conduct throughout the year. And of course, this event is sponsored by the Community Fund of Bronxville, Eastchester, and Tocco. This, along with all of our outreach events, as well as the DARE program. So of course, a very special thanks to the Community Fund, and a plug for them to, you know, I know we were talking about donations to evac, which is so important, but donating to the Community Fund, who literally puts every single dollar back into our community, is so important. So thank you to the Community Fund, as always. So this is it, my last and final village board meeting. I think I have a couple of hundred under my belt over the last 20 years. It's been a pleasure. The meetings are usually interesting, sometimes entertaining, but getting the village work done is so important. And coming to these meetings over the years were important to me and the Police Department. Over the next several days and several weeks, really, until my retirement party on November 3rd, I will have a few opportunities to speak publicly, at which time I will speak about the Police Department, my career, and of course, my family. My wife, Donna, is here tonight. She wanted to be here with me at this last meeting. So I wanted to take this opportunity tonight to give out some thanks to people that work in this village, who worked in partnership with me and the Police Department all these years. I'll start with the Village Clerk's Office. Camille, Jackie, John, I'm gonna put you in the Clerk's Office because I'm taking your job, apparently, in the Administrator's Office. Working with these three people, they're professional. They're always, they go out of their way to help and always a help to me and the Police Department. The Building Department with Bill Williams, Mike Semenara, and Mary Ann, again, we all know Mary Ann runs that office, but all three of them can't be more helpful. And I've worked with Bill for many years, and he's been, it's been a pleasure working with him and all three of them in the Building Department. The Court, we have Connie, Maureen, and now Kara, and of course, Judge Fuller and Judge O'Toole. I think Judge Fuller is neck and neck with me as far as tenure in the village, and Judge O'Toole is right behind Judge Fuller. They are great jurists. They are fair. And, you know, working with them as arbitrators have, over all the cases we've had over the years, I can't say enough for their integrity and how they dispense justice here in the village. Our Treasurer's Office with Ryan Rueda and assisted by Debbie. Ryan's a great, great individual, and literally, I've watched him grow up on his job when he first started off, and he's learned so quickly and is so knowledgeable and is so helpful to us, you know, in preparing budgets and payroll and all of our finances. So thank you to Ryan. To our library staff, we have Swadish and Elaine are here tonight. Thank you to both of them and everybody at the library for all the work they do and for making this village a better place because of their work. Gary Gerson, we've worked together on a lot of cases, and he's really fair with people that come in with traffic violations or village code violations. He's always taken a fair approach to settling disputes and matters. And I think people have been much better off because of that fairness and equity in the way you do your business here. So thank you, Gary, and again, thank you for working with us over the years. I said that in my time here, at least, the village, the second best thing that I think a village board has done over the years was creating the position as village administrator. And the best thing they did was hire David Burke to be that administrator. He's brought a tremendous amount of professionalism, put the finances of the village that were somewhat messy at one point in time, really on the straight and narrow. True professional, knowledgeable in just about every facet of administrating village government. He made my life so much easier. Things that I had to do before there was a village administrator, he took over. And the village is such a better place because of it. So thank you to David and all the hard work he's done, and has made my life as Chief of Police so much better and so much easier. To the village board and previous village boards, I've been so fortunate to have people in elected positions who support the mission of the Police Department, who understand that public safety is the top priority of any government, who have been so supportive of me during my whole time as Chief of Police, and even before that, from the time I was hired as a police officer. So I thank this particular board first and foremost, but every single elected member of the board who served previously. I'm so thankful for all their support over the years. And then finally, to the people of Tocco, I'd like to share a story that I think exemplifies what it means to me to not only work in Tocco, but had the fortune of growing up in the village. Nicole, you could relate to this. As an elementary school student, I used to cut through my neighbor's yard to get to my bus stop. And I would, amongst everyone else on the block, we had one bus stop, and it was several blocks away. Now the bus stops every other house, it seems like. But we had one bus stop, and I lived on Chestnut, and we had to get down to Fulton for the bus stop, so we cut through, cut through between Chestnut and Wallace to get there. And there was a woman, a neighbor of ours who lived across the street from us, her name was Grace Bianchi, who lived in one of the homes between the alleyway between the two homes that we cut through every single day. And she never got angry about it, the noise we made and, you know, cutting through her yard. In fact, she'd look out the window and make sure that we, everything was in order, that we had our lunches or whatever, our homework, and just, or just say hello. And back then, I played the trumpet in elementary school, so I had a really bad habit of forgetting my trumpet. So she would yell out the window as I cut through the yard. She'd call me Gabriel after the archangel who played the trumpet. She said, "Gabriel, did you forget something today?" And then I'd have to run back, run up my driveway, try, and then chase the bus down Dante Avenue, and luckily, it would stop. But I use her as an example because my whole life, from a young boy through my career as a police officer and as I rose to the ranks, I had somebody like Grace looking out for me. This village has embraced me from the moment I was a young child till today. You know, I was very fortunate to be hired in my community that I grew up in. And, you know, during the course of my career, I've had some opportunities to go elsewhere, unsolicited offers, even after becoming chief. And I'll tell you that this is where I wanted to be always. And, you know, being able to rise through the ranks and become chief and lead a department that I am so proud of and fond of has been the privilege of my life. And I wouldn't trade it for anything. You know, John Gunther today was honored for all his work in our community. I've known John since we were 12 years old, playing sports together. And, you know, he epitomizes what this community's about, the importance of volunteerism, looking out for their neighbors. It's a privilege to call him a friend. And I think, you know, for me, that's the most things, that is one of the most things that I'm proud of, that I have people like John in my life still, all these years later. I have some friends that I just met, but I have lifelong friends. And I'm so proud of that. And I'm proud of being able to have led this Police Department. I will have a lot to say about the Police Department. I have a lot to say about my family and friends over the next several weeks at the different events. I don't want to be repetitive, but I just want to say to the people of Tocco, thank you.
Thank you. So I will change the order of the, hey, Carter, we're gonna keep going with the meeting. So I want to change the order of the meeting a little bit, and if there's anyone that would like to take a few moments now to address the chief, I'm gonna give you that opportunity. So if there's anyone in the audience that'd like to do that now, you may. And crying is allowed.
I didn't know I'd be addressing the chief tonight, but thank you for that. You know, I married a woman who was born on Bronx Street, and we live on Bronx Street, so she's been here since 19. I won't say it. Not gonna say it. Longer than anyone. And we, well, we did go to her 50th high school reunion the other night from 1973, and that was very cool, the Tocco High School graduating class, 1973. But I wanted to say this, that I've only been here 27 years, and that's considered nothing. Tell people I've been here 27 years, oh, you don't know anything. But all those years, I know John Costanzo, and it has just been such a pleasure to know him and to know the way he runs the department. I was, I was talking to one of the police officers a couple of years ago, and I told him about another department that affects our village and, and, and a massive problem with sick time in that department. And, and, and I said to him, "Sick?" He said, "Nobody calls in sick in the, in the police department?" Costanzo would come over and pull the covers off me if I called in sick. So I just want to let you know, what he was saying was that there's this enormous respect for the chief, and, and that, and all the guys have that kind of respect, and he has respect for them. And I've just been so impressed by that in all my time here. So thank you, Chief, for running a great department.
Thank you. If there's anyone else that would like to make brief, brief comments, please?
Thank you so much, John. It is amazing working with him. And whenever we call at the library and he helps, he was always there. It's such a pleasure. And wish you all the best. Thank you.
Hello, I'm delighted, lovely Village South High Street. I'm delighted to have a chance just to say a few words about Chief Costanzo. First place, everybody knows me. If something's on my mind, I'm going there. And I've gone to him a lot of times. And every time that I brought an issue to him, I felt so confident when I left that it had been addressed with dignity and with confidence and with competence. I'm big on competence because a lot of people have words with nothing backing it. He is just such a treasure here in this beautiful little village. We, I am so proud to have been able to know him, to even consider him as a friend. But he's a friend to Tocco and such a model for what law enforcement should be. His leadership has been pristine. I am so proud of him, and I'm so proud of our village of Tocco. And thank you, Chief, for your stewardship.
Thank you. Claire?
So in addition to the race, I did want to come to acknowledge John Costanzo's retirement. You know, when I was a kid, my parents taught me that I should minimize my contact with the police. So I, and that's what I did until I sat on this board. And, you know, it was a very tough time. When I was on the board, there was criminal justice reform, civil unrest, and COVID. And through all of those very difficult times, you know, we had many discussions with Chief Costanzo, and he was incredibly thoughtful, willing to rethink situations, always willing to talk. And, you know, he basically reformed my opinion of the police. And, and it made me realize that, you know, not every police department is like this, one we have in Tocco. And it really comes from the kind of leadership that Chief Costanzo has, you know, used throughout his entire tenure here, I'm sure. I'm glad to have been experienced a part of that. And, you know, you know, you have an amazing leader when they step out of a position and everything runs normally. So I know that he's left us in good hands. Thank you.
Claire Gorman, 24 Bronx Street. I got to know the chief well when we were, when I was a trustee from 2007 to 11. And I just want to say, you'd be hard-pressed to find a police department anywhere as good as the Tocco Police, and that's due to Chief Costanzo. So thank you, Chief.
Hello, Elaine Provenzano, 11 River Street, Tocco. I'm also the Children's Librarian. And John, as a resident, I feel safe in Tocco. You know, you and your team just make it a lovely place to live. And working with you, you just are always so kind and even. And I just think that affects everybody that's with you. So thank you so much, and I just wish you the best. I'm glad I'm still gonna be seeing you, though, too. So thank you for all your years of service.
Okay, anyone else? Is there anyone on Zoom? Okay. She should state, she should say her name and address.
I think that the police in this village is wonderful. And so is the Department of Works, which Joseph, he is also a great person. So we have a really great village, truly.
Thank you. Yeah. So I'd like to give the board an opportunity, if anybody would like to say a few words. Deputy Mayor?
Chief, I have only ever called you chief because I have such profound respect for you. And I want to just thank you for the level of professionalism that you've brought to the Police Department and the Office of Chief of Police. I appreciate your care and your understanding, your tempered approach, your willingness to listen and to answer questions when I've had them, your eye towards progress and reason. We are a community of 7,100 people who do not always see eye to eye or get along, but I can tell you one thing that 7,100 people all agree on is the deep love, admiration, and respect that they have for you and the work that you've done here in this community. And we just thank you so much. We're gonna miss you. I think everybody agrees that they're gonna miss you, and, but we're happy that you get to spend some time with your lovely wife. Congratulations.
Chief, you've always been very supportive of our veterans, and I thank you for that, for everything that you've done for us. You've been a fantastic neighbor. I hope I've been an okay neighbor. You've been great to our family and to every family in Tocco. So thank you for everything.
Thank you, Chief.
And Chief, I'm glad you told that story because I'll never forget ringing you up and being like, "My son cut through someone's yard. Please don't get him in trouble." But more seriously...
But more seriously, I would be proud if my son grew up to be the man that you are. You are a true man of honor and humanity. Thank you for your service to the village of Tocco.
So when I met the chief in 2018, I was first elected as village trustee. And my first conversation with him, I was struck at how committed he was to maintaining a level of integrity in the police department, which you don't always see. He didn't waver from his duty to serve and protect. And he had and continues to have a way about him that leaves politics out of the work that he does. I appreciated that about you, chief. And as time went on, we had some moments where we had conversations about varying topics and his sense of fairness and compassion shined through. We've laughed together, we've disagreed on some things, but we've always maintained a level of, dare I say, affection for one another. He's, the chief has a special place in my heart. I don't believe there's another John Costanzo. You're, you're unmatched. His mark on this department and on the village is also incomparable. I'm glad that he gets his flowers now, chief. I'm glad that you're able to get your flowers and that you can hear the impact that you've had on people while you're still here. And the entire board and I salute you for the tremendous impact that you've had on this department and on the village for the decades that you've served. I'm certain that your legacy will live on long after you're gone. So thank you, chief. And, and I'm asking everyone to join us as we do some form, more formal thank yous to the chief at his November 3 retirement party. I think you can contact Ashley Tocido, Detective Tocido, for more information. You can just call the village office if you're not sure where the party will be. So we look forward to continuing to celebrate your, the impact that you've had on the community, chief. And we just, we're just going to keep on celebrating. Thank you. So we'll get back to our business here. So another reminder, DPW Day at Main Street Park on October 21st from 10 to 2 PM. We also have new chief Larry Costanzo will be sworn in on October 20th. Larry Rota, sorry, your son, basically. Sorry, Larry. The new police chief Larry Rota's swearing in will be on October 23rd, 7 PM. It's sort of like his son, so Costanza. The creepy candy crawl will be on October 28th at 4 PM. And that's on Main Street. All of Main Street will be closed down. I remember when the chief was like, we don't need to close down Main Street for the creepy candy crawl. And then he came back and said, yeah, I think we should do, we should close it next year. So it's really a great time. I think Deputy Mayor will talk a little bit more about that at her report. We do have our next village board meeting on November 6th at 7 PM. And for the first time in the village's history, election day for the village will be on November 7th. And the village will have an opportunity for, to vote for the mayor and trustees, which there was a referendum and the village voted almost four to one to move the elections to November. So November 7th, election day, you have a, an election. And we also do have on October 20th, the walkout, chief. So on October 20th, there will be a ceremony where the chief walks out and he, basically it's, chief, why don't you come up and tell us what happens?
Thank you, mayor. It's just a very brief ceremony. It's my, this Friday is my last day of, as chief of police officially. So I will, it's a police department ceremony where members of the service that retire just walk out the building. It's not a big, long, fancy kind of event. It'll just be members of my department lining up as well as people from the community. And just, I'm walking out the building. I'll say a few words at the, at the steps of Village Hall in very brief words. And then, then I'm out the door, basically.
So we just want to encourage everyone to come out. And if you didn't have a chance to, to say your thank yous to the chief here, you can use that as an opportunity. There are a lot of different opportunities to come out and, and show the chief some love.
Just be, I just want, 4 o'clock, I'm sorry, 4 o'clock.
Oh, it's 4, not 3?
4 PM, Friday, the 20th, this Friday coming up. And just, I want to thank the board and, and all the members of the public for all their kind words tonight. It means a lot to me. Thank you.
You're welcome. I also want to acknowledge Donna Costanzo, the chief's wife. I believe that behind every good man is an even better woman. And I guess I'm a little biased around that. But thank you, Donna, for just supporting the chief to do the work that he does. I know it could not be easy for you at times. So thank you. So this will take us to the Board of Trustee reports and we'll start with Trustee Engelbert.
So I think the Zoom audio is, is still on. There's an echo. Awesome. Oh, there we go. No, it's still there. That's okay. I can have an echo. Hear me twice. Twice is nice, right? Okay, so, all right, so, okay, so my reports for, for the month. The first is on, on the library. She's not here, but I would like to congratulate Julie Girdon on, on taking the role as president of the library board. Julie is, Julie's a wonderful individual and we thank her for stepping up in this service. But perhaps more importantly, I would like to thank Ginger Crosby for her years of service and dedication to the library as a friend, as a board member, as a booster, as, kind of the roles are endless. Ginger, kind of in this night of, of service, I personally would like to thank you as well as kind of asking the entire village to thank you for the work that you've done to advance, advance the community that we live in. Thank you. Okay, so the Eastchester Unified Union Free School District, just some quick kind of bits there. Two things, there is an active principal search going on. If you are a resident or you are zoned for Eastchester schools, you should have received a, a survey invite. Please participate in this. The public engagement in the search for a key leader in a district is kind of part of our civic engagement. And so please make your kind of views known in that. Kind of free and open search is, is standard best practice for school districts. So please, in fact, fill out that survey and have your voice heard. The second bit is October 23rd. There's a college fair in conjunction with the Pelham School District, October 23rd, 7 to 9 in the Eastchester High School gym. I know a fair bit about college searches, kind of given my, my role professionally and kind of getting out there early and often and learning about what is likely to be kind of the, one of the largest investments you and your families make in the life and your children's education. It's good to kind of do your quote unquote homework on the college, the college search. Nope. No, definitely pun intended. The Tocco Community Center, I will reiterate what the mayor has said. The village elections are November 7th, 6 AM to 9 PM. It is your duty and obligation as a voter and a resident to participate in elections. Participate, voter participation is a pillar of a, a free and open democracy. If you want to keep that democracy, you need to pony up and, and pull the, kind of the lever. Though we're not pulling levers in those voting booths kind of anymore, thankfully. The last bit is task. I want everyone to go to the village website, click on the Environmental Sustainability Committee, and I want you to watch, just take a few minutes and watch kind of what mulching leaves in place means and what it means for the environment. You don't have to do it. All I'm asking is that you just take a look and kind of understand kind of the benefits to our environment and your soil. And apparently, your car's not lighting on fire, mulching those leaves in place. Just two minutes, that's all I ask. And with that, I will close it out and I would hand it over to Daryl, but he's sick. So I guess it's.
Deputy Mayor, deputy, de- Deputy Mayor?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. So, welcome Elaine to the, as a member of the zoning board of appeals. This month, the zoning board and the planning board are both adjourned. So there's no new business and there are no meetings. I actually have a very short report today. I just want to say a huge congratulations to the Tocco seniors for their new annual fundraiser, which was Bingo Night. Bingo Night was held on Saturday. It was a packed house. There were almost, I think there were about 150 people there. It was hosted by Gina Lee and attended by many, many people. The room was on fire with excitement. The Tocco seniors wish to extend a big thanks to their small army of volunteers, especially their director Lisa Jones, who's just phenomenal. I want to give a special shout out to the silent heroes of the event, the DPW and the community center staff who came in at the 13th hour and helped, you know, helped out moving furniture and everything. So, big thank you to all of them. And the creepy candy crawl, which is the event of the month. So if you don't know or if you aren't familiar, if you haven't been, you need to come out on October 28th at 4 o'clock. 4 to 5:30 is the creepy candy crawl on Main Street. The Main Street will be shut down from Marble Dale to Depot Square. So just please be advised, that includes the parking lot across the street here from Village Hall. Chief, what time do we shut down? About 3:30, right? So just know that if you are parked across the street, you will not be able to move your car. So just be aware of that. The event itself is a great time. We had, we had about 1,000 people attend last year. The street was packed. There is, there are crafts, there are giveaways, there's lots of candy. We, again, we gave out like maybe 50,000 pieces of candy last year. If you are able and willing and would like to donate candy, we need the donations. As I have learned, there is never, ever enough. There is never enough candy. So you can bring the candy here to Village Hall and give it to one of the, the staff or I can come pick it up from you. I have absolutely no problem doing that. You can also mail it to my house if you want. Any, by any means necessary, we will get this candy. And so the other exci-, yeah, so we're all going to be dressed up and you can come, dress up and bring, come with the kids and, or come by yourselves. There's going to be a flash mob, there's going to be dancing, a dance party. There are crafts and giveaways and all kinds of wonderful things. And a lot of community organizations will be there handing out candy. So October 28th, if you'd like to volunteer or donate, by all means, please just reach out to me and let me know. Thank you. I also have Trustee Taylor's report, so can I just go ahead and give that now? Yep. So, Trustee Taylor, like we said, is not feeling great. His report is short. The Eastchester Chamber of Commerce had a ribbon cutting today at the new orthodontist's office on Main Street, Ortho on Main. So if you haven't checked them out and you have children who need orthodontic work, by all means, please go give them a, a holler. Their monthly meeting is Wednesday, the 18th at the Broken Bro Brewery at 5 o'clock for Ecap. Any seniors interested in learning computer technologies, contact Ecap. There are free rides for seniors with Family Services of Westchester. And you can contact Ecap at 914-347-7768. Also, anybody who's interested in donating a turkey, please do so or commit to do so by November 14th. And then save the date. The MLK Martin Luther King Breakfast will be back this year for the first time since COVID. I know, it is a great event. It is probably one of, yeah. I, we haven't had that since 2020. So that'll be January 15th, 2024. I'll see you all there. Thank you.
Trustee Gatchio?
Thank you, mayor. Chief, you got called a gem tonight. You've ever been called a gem before? So we're going to start with the History Committee. On September 27th, eight members of the Tocco History Committee attended the Revolutionary Westchester 250 Countywide Summit at the county center to plan for the celebration of the local revolutionary sites and history in 2026. On September 30th, Nick Zenzano presented Tocco today and yesterday to the Crestwood Library. And their Facebook page this month reached 2,294 people. Kind of an interesting fact, a visiting family from Florida donated pictures from 1934 of the Crestwood Building, including a train ticket from the Metro North from 1937. So that's kind of neat. If any of you have seen the Bruce Almighty trend on TikTok, if you come here at Village Hall, just me? If you've, if you come here at Village Hall between 9:30 and 12 on Wednesday, they're very busy. So they can always use volunteers if you want to be part of the History Committee. They also are looking for any pictures or yearbooks or anything else that you have that connects to your history in Tocco. So they are here Wednesdays, 9:30 to 12. The Historic Preservation Commission is meeting on Wednesday, October 26th, right here in Village Hall at 6:30. All are encouraged to attend the meeting. And the holiday season is fast upon us, which means that the beautiful decorations that adorn our light posts, light poles will be up before you know it. However, the beautification committee cannot do this without all of our help. No donations for them are too big or too small. And we are finalizing some details for our holiday fundraiser in November, so please stay tuned. And for our veterans, October 16th to October 20th is National Buddy Check Week, sponsored by the Veterans Administration. If you are a veteran or know a veteran, take a minute this week to check in on them. And that goes for dependents and spouses as well. If you know my wife, you should probably check in on her. She probably needs it as, as much as anybody. But check in on, on that veteran this week. Closer to home, the Eastchester Veterans Association will hold their Veterans Day Ceremony on Saturday, November 11th at 11 AM at Lake Isle. And we here in Tocco will be recognizing our veterans on November 4th. We will have more details to follow. And lastly, a friend of Tocco and Vietnam era veteran, Mike Fixx, is in the hospital. I spoke with him today. He is doing well. He is on the mend. But if you know him, give him a buddy check this week as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. I spoke to Mike Fixx as well today. So first and foremost, I'd like to, on behalf of the entire board, Camille, offer our condolences. Our village clerk, her father-in-law passed away, Nicholas DeSalvo. And so our, our prayers are with you guys. I want to just talk a little bit about the, all the flooding that we've been experiencing in the village. And I really want to thank DPW and the entire staff for their response to the storms and the flooding in those areas that have been hit hard throughout the years. They've worked to create barriers next to the river, took calls from residents and directed assistance where it's needed and just really offered to help in any way that they could in such a compassionate way. We were having a wedding on the day that there was, you know, a really bad storm. And I'm trying to find the village administrator, David Burke, and he's like, I'm sorry, I'm down here on Lake trying to help people. So we've really been hit hard, as many other communities have been. And I just wanted to thank the, the entire village, the administration, the staff, the deputy mayor and the village administrator and I went out and with the DPW superintendent Frank to meet with some residents in those areas that were impacted the hardest to take a look at the issues that were, and we're seeking ways to address really a decades-long problem that seems to be getting more and more complicated as the storms worsen throughout the years. And so we've been really pushing the county and the state and the federal government for assistance because expecting the village to take care of the flooding issues that we are experiencing is, is really cost prohibitive. We couldn't afford it if we wanted to. So we are, we are doing a few things within our means, putting up catch basins in areas where the water's not draining quickly enough. We're creating temporary walls to help retain some of the water from the river as it's crested down on Yonkers and, and Elm. We're consulting with our village engineer to, to talk about what, what scope of work we can look at that we might be able to afford to take care of some of this. And I'm constantly in touch with our legislators to say, we need help at all levels of government to help us with a more comprehensive response to flood mitigation. There is the Environmental Bond Act that many, you know, would help bring in funding to address these issues. But the, with the Environmental Bond Act, you have to put the money up front and then get reimbursed. And so it still creates a problem if you don't have that kind of money. So I just wanted to let the residents know that we're, we're looking at all avenues. I know the village administrator and Frank are just con- are just constantly taking a look at what is it that we can do that may help. But if we look at our neighbors in Bronxville, who spent upwards of $5 million on addressing flood, flooding, and then they got flooded, it's really heartbreaking when you're spending that kind of money and then you're still suffering from, you know, the, the storms and the flooding that continues to happen. So, we're, we're going to stay on top of that, and we are going to continue to seek that. I have spoken directly to our county executive, our state senator, and our congressman to say, you know, what more can be done. So, we are pushing along those lines. I also wanted to note, we talked about Ecap having its, its MLK breakfasts. Once again, everyone's really excited about that. Our keynote speaker this year will be Belinda Miles. She's the executive director for Westchester Community College. So, everyone's really excited to hear from her. We'll give you a little more information as the months, you know, pass about our theme and who our honorees will be. And we want to welcome the Ortho, the new business on Main Street, Ortho on Main. The deputy mayor and I went just before our meeting and celebrated their opening with a ribbon cutting. So, if you have children and they are also treating, you know, taking care of adults and you need an orthodontist, they're right on Main Street. So, that is it for me. And that takes us to the second opportunity to address the board. So, is there anyone that would like to address the board?
Hello, Samantha Christian, 72 Main Street. And several things. First, I wanted to thank DPW. We lost water earlier this week, and they were hard at work fixing the water main and got it back up in, you know, record time. So, I wanted to thank them very much for that. And also, of course, we've mentioned before, the Candy Crawl. It's really fun. The Juneteenth committee, we have a table there, too. And it's, it's great fun with music and activities. So, everybody, young and old, come. And also, I have a question for anybody here. Do we have a local newspaper?
Local as in, other than the Lo-Hud or?
Or like a Tukahoe-only newspaper?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Eastchester Review.
Yeah, but that's not.
The Eastchester Review.
But not a Tukahoe one?
Yeah, not a Tukahoe one.
Okay, so.
But, yeah.
I was, I was thinking about that recently, how a lot of local newspapers around the nation have been closed and shut down, and the importance of local news directly from the residents and the people who work in the area. And so, you know, could be called Tukahoe Today or whatever, and I would be happy to try to, you know, contribute to that. And we can have the History Committee, library, and residents help make it happen. So, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the board?
Good evening.
Ginger Crosby, 9 Warren Avenue, Tukahoe. I wanted to acknowledge Renee. Since Renee came to the village and filled out her paper application form about wanting to volunteer at the library, when I was library president of the board, she's just, anything you gave her to do, she did it with blazing glory and then took the Friends of the Library from one century into the other electronically in our abilities. And I'm so happy that she's committed to do this up until the 100th time we have a race. So, you have to start grooming. Yeah. Oh, is it a thing? Right, right.
100.
Start grooming somebody.
100 is on record, right? Camille, it's on record.
That would be good if it happens. But anyway, it's just amazing to see her in action. Chief, now that you're retired, the Friends of the Library are looking to volunteer. [laughing] Anytime you have to spare, we're going to focus on fundraising. Just so you know, if you want a bake, that's good for the bake sale. But that's certainly something we could use help with.
And I also wanted to know about parking meters. I know this is a dead Thorn and David's side, but I started this initiative, I don't know how many years back, in one administration, because there's one row of cars that face the library with six meters. So, two were taken away one year, then two were taken away another year. And I still have my last two to go to get my goal accomplished. So, I was wondering, how much money does a meter really make in a day? So, that, we can't afford to give our residents of Tukahoe the opportunity to visit a free service of the library at no cost to them. I know you can't control who parks in a spot, and I know we've got apartment buildings nearby and people visit them and use them. But there's, but I just think it just reflects well on us that we're willing to do that for our residents. And you know, I've been involved with the library a long time, 15 years maybe now, I'm not even sure. And thank you, Nicole. I had no idea you were going to say such lovely things. None of them are true, but... You forgot my biggest role, which was Easter Bunny for a number of, for about eight years. And Claire Gorman is the one who got me involved originally when she was on the trustees on the board. But anyway, Tukahoe, I've been here since 1976, and I tell people, it is the best place to live. And our claim to fame is being Tukahoe marble and the Norman Rockwell painting of the Crestwood Station. And people come in and have a little identification. I recently had an Indian family move in next door to me, so I've been reaching out to help them out of curiosity. Do we give a new welcome package to people when they move in?
We do not, in a formal way.
I think that's something you need to do.
So, it is, it is something that's on our, our agenda of items to tackle.
Being the new package person for them. And, you know, they're curious, they want to know, and I think it sends a wonderful tone from day one into what kind of community we are.
Absolutely.
That's my suggestion for the night.
So, Ginger, thank you for your tenacity. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
And one day, I do, I would appreciate knowing how much a parking meter makes in a day, particularly those two. Okay?
Those two specifically, David. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ginger. That was, that was the greatest commentary I've ever heard during this. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on any, on anything?
Lovely Phillips again. I am sitting here, and everybody knows I love theater and plays. I'm thinking of, what's it, I Got a Crow. That's from Peter Pan? Yeah, Peter Pan. That's how I feel right now about Tukahoe. And you know I love Tukahoe. I've been here since Columbus, but... But I, I, and I speak my mind. What I like, I like. What I don't like, I don't like. I want to give you, and this is not a campaign speech, this is serious in terms of the fact that you have led our district, our town, village with such dignity and competence. When I look up there, you know what you're doing. You can find the place. You know each of you. It's clear. It's honest. And I know we're having an election. I don't know what the outcome will be. I'm just talking about what we've had. And I am so proud of your leadership over this village that I love so passionately. And I, I, I just didn't want to let this evening go without telling you how much I appreciate you and how much I love our village and how much we, we are the Americans. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else would like to address the board?
Excuse me if I cough. I just got over pneumonia. Sal Provenzano, 11 River Street, Tukahoe, New York. Speaking on behalf of Friends of the Ward House, I am the president of Friends of the Ward House. I have two items that I would like to discuss. First of all, I would like to discuss the compliance issue within the Tukahoe Landmark Law, which requires the owner of a historic landmark to maintain the property to the compliance standards within the law. And it's a, it's a pretty short paragraph, so I want to go on record reading it. It is Section 8, Part B. "No owner or person with an interest in a local landmark or property included within a historic district shall permit the property to fall into serious state of disrepair as to result in the deterioration of any exterior architectural feature which would produce a detrimental effect upon the property or the character of the historic district as a whole. Examples of such deterioration include: All interior portions therein, which, if not so maintained, may cause or tend to cause the exterior portions to deteriorate, decay, or become damaged or otherwise to fall into a serious state of disrepair. Two, deteriorated or inadequate foundation. Three, defective or deteriorated flooring or floor supports. Four, deterioration of walls or other vertical supports. Five, deterioration of roofs or other horizontal members. Six, deteriorations of chimneys. Seven, deterioration or crumbling of exterior stucco, mortar, plaster, or facades. Eight, ineffective or inadequate waterproofing of exterior walls, roofs, or chimneys, including windows and doors. Nine, any fault or defect in the building or structure which compromises the life and character of the building structure. Ten, deterioration of any feature so as to create a hazardous condition which could lead to the claim that demolition is necessary for public safety." So, we all know through the testimony over the months and year of the developer that his goal is to tear down the ward house. He was denied by the Tukahoe Preservation Commission in no uncertain terms that the structure was a hazard to society. The appeal is in process. What I ask for, all I'm asking for, is that this law, which is on the books, be enforced. Now, why do I think it's not being enforced? Because when I go by the ward house now, I see vegetation growing out of the gutters. I see windows that are open. But most importantly, I look at the Pantech Engineering Report that the developer supplied themselves. That was, that was done between September of 2022 and December of 2022, which shows these deficiencies within the building. Now, what the developer fails to realize is that he had possession of this building in September of 2021. It is my contention that these deficiencies were a result of his neglect between September of 2021 and September of 2022. And since there was no baseline report that was done when he bought the building, it is his, if it's his contention, he has no proof. So, here's what I contend to do, or should be done. First of all, the village of Tukahoe, this is not a situation where the Friends of the Ward House is looking to make any money on this. We put sweat equity into this for two years. What we want to make sure is, is that there's a law on the books that it's enforced. And if part of that law requires somebody to go in there and to do an inspection on behalf of the village of Tukahoe, and if these deficiencies are found, and these deficiencies were in place for a year when he had the building, that these deficiencies have to be addressed immediately before the winter sets in. You know, it's very easy to leave a pipe on and leave a window open to make sure that if there is, you know, a big storm or a big freeze, that the building falls down and, oh, well, you know, that's what happens. Okay? So, I'm going to stop here. I don't know if any of the board wants to address me on this issue.
No, we're, we're taking in your information so that we can follow, follow up with it.
Okay, thank you. And I, and that's, that's what I expect. And, and I have to say, from a personal note, we are family in this town, all of us. And sometimes families have disagreements. And, but we want the right thing to happen for the town, because the reality is, is that the ward house is a gem for the village of Tukahoe and specifically for the town of Eastchester and the village of Bronxville. And I have to tell you, in talking to Shelley Mayer, in talking to Amy Pollan, in talking to George Latimer, talking to Connie Keough, these houses are few and far between. If this house is torn down, this house will be irreplaceable. That's my first point. Second point, Josh, you're off by a day. It's Wednesday, the 25th, is the, is the HPC meeting. I, let me tell you what's going to happen at that HPC meeting. Our friend, the developer, even though he was turned down from demolishing the building because his assertions were unfounded, that it's dangerous, now he's going to claim an economic hardship, which will then result in the same demolition of that building. What I would, I'm asking for is a packed house here on Wednesday, the 25th, to show the support of the village of Tukahoe, that this cannot happen through a, through review of the facts, but review of facts from before the developer bought that property. That developer bought the property in December of 2021. I have minutes from the July 2021 meeting of the Board of Trustees where the historic law was mentioned. The early August meeting, where the meeting was set up to put the moratorium in place, and the actual moratorium went into place October 31st. So, the developer went in with his eyes wide open. He took a speculative risk in buying this, and now he wants the village of Tukahoe to bail him out. I don't think it's fair, because that's taking away history from the village of Tukahoe, town of Eastchester, state of New York. Okay? So, I can tell you that on Wednesday, the 25th, we're going to have at least a packed house with Channel 12, Lo-Hud. There's going to be complete visibility of this meeting, just as it was in May, when his first certificate of appropriateness was presented regarding wanting the demolition of that building because of unsafety. Now, if I sound passionate about this, I am. I am, not because it's anything that I'm going to have personal gain with. It's the personal gain of the village of Tukahoe and our grandchildren and our grandchildren's grandchildren. History is important. We are three years away from celebrating the 250th anniversary of the reading of the Declaration of Independence. Samuel Crawford, who was assassinated on the ward house property, was one of the most prominent patriots that died. He died as a veteran before there were GI Bills, before there were any kind of benefits of anything for families. He just, he gave his all. And Samuel Crawford doesn't even have a grave, because when he was assassinated and he was morally wounded, he didn't even make it to the prison ship. They dumped him in the road somewhere. So, the reality is, is that the ward house has been watered with the blood of scores of patriots. So, all I'm asking for is, if this is important to you, village of Tukahoe, then please make every effort to come out here on Wednesday, the 25th of October at 6:30 p.m. and show that doing the right thing, even though it might not be easy, is something that's worth doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sal. Is there anyone else that would?
Anthony Fuhrer again. You brought up flooding. I was watching the last town board meeting. They had some issues to a flooding area. They also mentioned on the Tukahoe side, Stebbins and Everett. I guess some flooding coming from the field. I don't know if anybody told you guys about it. So, just look into that one. And, and hopefully Yonkers knows about their property, where they're going to build those apartments. And hopefully Yonkers knows about their property, where they're going to build those apartments. Hopefully, if they build something that's not going to let the water there, then more water doesn't come on the Tukahoe side because now the water's going to go that way instead of that way. And one more thing, I wrote the Metro North about the roof. That's supposed to have been done back in the spring, but I got back. It's an ongoing project. There's no completion date. So it's supposed to be done by like, beginning of this year. Still looks the same. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony. And is there anyone else in the room that would like to address the board? Is there anyone on Zoom? We are still working on it. It does, it's not going to just take one month. Susan?
So it wouldn't happen until June 1st of next year anyway. So we, that, that's the ultimate goal. We have interviewed a couple of companies. Well, yeah, this, this, this year is already, this year is, we're already in the current fiscal year. So we wouldn't implement a program for this fiscal year. If anything, the goal is for June 1st of next year.
Yeah. So Suzanne, it's, it's not just you make a decision and you just go do it. It's got to be in the budget. The board has to, and the village administration has to vet. You know, there's, there's just a whole process. And so, yeah, next year. Sorry about that. Anyone else on Zoom? Okay. You have nothing? Okay. All right. So that will end the second opportunity to address the board and we will adjourn the meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn? Have a good night, Tukahoe. See you next month.